The September 6, 2016 meeting of the Jackson City Council order. We'll call on Councilman Charles Rum to lead us in our invocation and pledge. If you would, please stand.
We don't have a flag in here. They took it out in the press conference.
That's right. Pray with me, please. Dear fathers, as we stand before you this morning, we are just so thankful for the many blessings that you have given us. I'm thankful for the men and women that come to work for the city of Jackson every day in their diligence in trying to make Jackson a better place. I'm thankful for the members of this council and their dedication to serving others and to serving you. Dear Lord, we want to lift up our men and women of our armed forces that give us the freedom to be here this morning, to stand and to divorce our opinions and to be together as a body. Dear Lord, we just lift you up, we praise you, we thank you for everything that you do for us, that you'll continue to do for us. Most of all, we thank you for your love that you have for us and for the sacrifice that you made through the death of your son on the cross. And it's in his name that I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every single justice for all.
Did we have a flag in the room? Let me just, well, let's go ahead and have the roll call. Yeah, you can show Councilman Cisco absent. Councilman Brooks called in early, said he'd be late, but we fully expect him to be in here shortly. And also, I think we have some special guests this morning, whom I'd like to just recognize. Have the former CEO of West Tennessee Healthcare, Bobby Arnold, is here. Bobby, good to see you. Also have President of Lane College, honor to have him here, Dr. Logan Hampton is with us, I think. Logan, where are you? There he is. And also have a member of the Jackson Madison County School Board here, David Clift is here. He was sitting back there in the back. Thank you, guys, for being here. Item four is the approval of the minutes of August 2, 2016 City Council meeting. Council members received a copy of those minutes. If there are any additions, revisions, or corrections, please let me know. If not, we'll let those minutes stand as distributed. Item five is the invitation for public comment. If there's anyone present who'd like to be heard on any item under new business, if you would let me know at that time, I'll be happy to call them. Proclamations. Item six, we have none. Recognitions, we have one. I think we have someone here from the NAACP, Jackson Madison County branch, with an outreach advocacy proposal presented for a mobile farmers market for the East Jackson community. Come on up. If you'd be kind enough just to introduce yourself, then feel free to introduce the council.
I stand up.
You can sit down right there.
Okay. Thank you. I'm Flora Claybrook, and I am the chairperson for the Jackson Madison County NAACP's Health Committee. And I appreciate you all allowing me to be here this morning and to present an advocacy proposal. I would like for one of my committee members to distribute to you all some information.
Sure.
Do that, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there are others left, that's fine. I don't know how much time you're allowing me, but I won't, I'll try not to take a lot of time, Mayor.
Thank you.
And I won't go over everything in this verbatim. It's there. I've got the information for you all to take a look at. But I do want to say, according to the American Health Rankings, Tennessee is and has been one of the least healthy states in the nation for the past 20 years, ranking 45th in 2014 and 43 in 2015. And African Americans continue to contract and die from treatable diseases at a disproportionately higher rate than, say, Caucasian Americans. And for this particular reason, the NAACP remains committed to working towards the promotion, protection, and maintenance of African Americans' health. So with that in mind, the Health Committee is very involved in trying to initiate a lot of efforts regarding education, fitness, healthy eating, lifestyle changes, and of course, this is an advocacy outreach effort here that we are advocating for. And that is a mobile farmers market for the East Jackson community. And I do emphasize, this is advocacy. And there are some statistics within here that I don't necessarily have to go over. I'll let you, you all can look at those. But I do want to say that we're all aware that the East Jackson area is a food desert and that there are numerous convenience stores on every corner almost that sells fast foods, fried foods, the unhealthy options. But the actual groceries that have fresh produce is likened, there's only one, and that's on East Chester. Now, we want to, we're advocating for a mobile market that would go into the community with designated locations and designated times with fresh produce. This would offer a healthier option for the neighborhood, the East Jackson neighborhood. So again, we believe that over time, this in itself could impact healthier lifestyles because statistics on diabetes, obesity continue to rise. So we want to do everything that we possibly can do to prevent that or to reverse that trend, rather than see it continue to escalate. That is our focus for today. And we looked at, this is already being done in some other areas, and you do have a hand out also about the Green Machine. This is what's been done in Memphis. They've got a bus that's called a Green Machine that actually goes to designated neighborhoods' locations with fresh produce for the neighborhood. So this is what we're advocating and hoping that you all will consider this seriously and having something of that nature. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions from council? Thank you very, go ahead.
In the playbook, I'd like to make a statement that you are correct with respect to the supermarkets with nutritional food. We only have one, it's on Chester Street. That's it. You are absolutely correct.
And when we actually did a walkthrough of that, that was a poor selection of fresh produce. Could have been just the day we were there, but it certainly didn't look very appealing. Anything else?
Well, thank you for your, yeah. Tony, yeah, you want to come up and share local, local foods, local places?
My chairperson, who is Dr. Lake, if you want to chime in. We appreciate the NAACP's concern and commitment. And before the meeting, I've already indicated to her that we're already along that way. We've received a technical assistance grant from the Robert Woods Johnson, and this is exactly where we're going. And what we have done is invited a representative, either her or someone from the NAACP, to be a part of the committee that we've established with this grant. And we are supportive of a mobile farmer's market. Let me say that we are to the point now where we're just about ready to look at additional funding to put it in place. And Dr. Lake, if you want to chime in, we're partnered with Lane College and several other people in the committee.
Dick, was your man coming up?
Yeah. Yeah, so we, this is great.
I do know we have the technical assistance grant, Dr. Lake, but how about the implementation part of that? Do we still have an opportunity to seek funding through Robert Woods Johnson?
Sure, we have, we have actually two funding. We have Local Foods, Local Places from the EPA, and then we have the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation Invest Health. And those are kind of working hand in hand as we're looking at food deserts in our community and what can we best do to address that. And our timetable is, we are in the fall going to do with Lane College, a listening tour and focus groups in the East Jackson community to really get what they would like to see. And then the implementation grant, we would be applying for next summer to start in January of 18. Now, there's also U.S. Department of Agriculture grant funding for farmers markets. That is how we got the EBT at the current farmers market. But we can apply for additional Department of Agriculture money for whatever we decide is the best avenue to go.
Okay. Thank you all for your, for your work on that, and Tony Recreation Parks Department. Again, thank you for your presentation. It looks like things are moving, but we appreciate y'all's interest and your, and your, and your passion. Thank you all. Any questions, council? Thank you. Item eight, first readings, we have none this month. Second readings. Item nine is we have consideration of ordinance to accept match point drive running west off Highway 45 North directly across from Parker Drive. Council has approved this ordinance on first reading. Is there a motion?
Motion, second.
Motion, properly second, and discussion. Council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
Item two, under second readings, consideration of ordinance to abandon unnamed alley running south off West Lafayette Street between 223 and 235 West Main Streets, submitted by James Upchurch.
Move for approval.
This is second reading. Have a motion for approval? Second?
Second.
Have a second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item 10, under new business, has consideration proposal to purchase 21.03 acres of vacant land located west of North Highland Avenue, Jackson, Tennessee, from Highland Green Properties. Tony, if you would, you make that presentation to council.
Well, this land is adjacent to the tennis complex that we just completed. It's about 21 acres to the south. It will really tie in for future development for that area, along with the development of the tennis complex. And it's just a golden opportunity for us to have this. Some of the things that we potentially would be looking at in that particular area, there's a subdivision that's just south of the complex, of this particular property. We're looking at maybe a small walking trail, a passive type of park situation, hopefully possibly develop additional soccer fields for practice about to. And pretty much, this is an opportunity to kind of have a control of what's coming south of us and around the tennis complex.
Baseball doesn't exist anymore? Baseball doesn't exist anymore out north?
Baseball doesn't exist anymore. Yeah, we have baseball fields over in North Park.
We do?
Yeah.
Oh, we got one field over there.
No, we got four T-ball fields and a field for, like, upper age kids, yeah.
Okay. Well, we definitely need more practice fields for both of soccer and baseball.
Yeah.
We had the funding set aside for continued development of the Jackson Tennis Center and the development side of it, but owner of the property reached out to us. We did not reach out to him and offered the property to the city for, I think, $7,500 an acre. And any property north of the interstate, I think for that type price would be well intended for future development. The development at North Park has just about consumed all the property that was bought initially, which was pretty close to 100 acres. And that park has been out there probably for what?
Since 96.
16, 17, 96. So the property gets away fairly quickly. So we thought it well intended to go ahead and get this property while it's available for future development of the city's park system. Any questions from council?
Tony, not on this, but are there any more plans to put any soccer fields, additional soccer fields out south?
I met with the group from Malice's and what had happened. We had soccer, and unfortunately, originally, there was pretty good support with about four or five small teams out there. But after about two years, it's dropped off to basically enough kids to play to just have two teams. And so our athletic department felt that it just wasn't feasible to develop. We had a field that we developed for play that was like a temporary field, but the interest, and I spoke to the Malice's group, and they understood that, and they were going to look at promoting and the possibility of getting more teams involved. It's just, that was just the problem there.
Okay.
And speaking of Malice's, for your information, of course, the Ernies are no longer going to do the Dixie Youth, but there's another group, this group that I met, who has been accepted and is committed to run the program. So tell the rumors out there that the park's going to be closed and bulldozed, just tell them that's just rumors.
Okay.
That park will be there.
And what's this company that's going to be doing this, or this agency?
No, this is just a group of parents.
Oh, just a group of parents?
Of concerned parents, who formed a group that the, my stipulation with them is they had to be accepted by the Dixie Youth Organization, and they were.
Okay.
And so there's some things that we're going to work with them on, like we have always done, so just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think we have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
One question.
Sure.
If we approve this purchase, there'll be a budget amendment next month to bring addition, send the budget?
Okay. Any other questions or comments from council?
It's in the budget already. Is that in the tennis complex, what you're talking about, the money, the budgets for that? We're going to use that for this?
And the grants.
And I'm going to do more development on the tennis complex for the time being?
We'll continue to, I think we have a tennis pavilion underway with the money remaining in the budget for the tennis center. And once it's completed, then we'll, we'll look at a second phase at some point. Nothing planned right now. Do we have, we have motion and a second, right? Any additional comments or questions from council? If not, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Tony. Item two is to a resolution to approve consolidated annual performance evaluation report. Latoya, come on up.
Good morning. Yeah. What I have for you all this morning is a resolution to approve our consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, or CAPER, as it is referred. We're required to submit a CAPER to HUD 90 days after the fiscal year end, which was June 30. So our CAPER is due to HUD no later than September 30. We had a 15-day public review period, which we presented the CAPER to the public, which the review period ended September 2. We received no comments. We had a public meeting, August 29, to present the CAPER. We had no comments there as well. We also presented the CAPER to the Jackson Housing Authority's Board of Commissioners at their August board meeting to recommend approval to city council, and they did pass a resolution to recommend to you all.
Okay, Latoya, let me, can the audience hear? Can you all hear okay? No?
Oh, sorry.
Guys in the control booth, could y'all turn up the volume a little bit on the desk mics, if you would? Thanks. Go ahead.
Okay. The CAPER basically outlines our accomplishments as they pertain to our annual action plan goals. And we have four goals that we work to obtain each year. Those are improve quantity and quality of affordable housing, provide expanded economic opportunities, provide a suitable living environment, and expand the capacity of homeless providers. We have three funding sources that we use to carry out these activities. We have the Community Development Block Grant, the Home Grant, and the Emergency Solutions Homeless Grant. Collectively, we budgeted with those three grants, a total of $955,287 to carry out these activities. We expended with all three of these grants, a total of $1,066,000. Our expenditures exceeded the budget by about $100,000 due to housing activities that were budgeted in the previous year but expended during the current program year, which was like rehab activities. With those, with that $1 million expended, we were able to serve 491 low-income individuals and families through public service activities such as the youth after-school programs, the WIA At-Risk Youth Program, and fair housing counseling and referral activities. We were able to rehab 26 housing units, and our housing agencies, Southwest CDC and Jonah Affordable Housing, they acquired and rehabbed three houses with their funding. We were able to serve 324 low-income individuals through homeless services and/or emergency shelter with the funds. And that was just a brief summary, but I can elaborate on anything if you'd like and or answer any questions.
Latoya, how many, how many independent groups are working with you all as far as rehabilitation of homes, other than Jonah? Is that, is that basically the only one you have, other than maybe Southwest?
Jonah and Southwest, they do the acquisition and rehab to, Southwest CDC, they will acquire and rehab homes to sell, and Jonah acquires and rehabs homes for rental. But as far as the rehab activities, we do that in-house. We take applications in-house to rehab homeowner, homes.
Any questions or comments from council as far as?
Mr. Chairman, are you currently in collaboration with Whitehall Project, the homes?
Yes. On the section 108, yes.
How many?
Five to six is what they, and they've already started to.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Okay, any other questions?
To adopt the resolution?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Latoya. Okay, item three is the report from District One, District Two of the Jackson Community Redevelopment District, with Stan and Dr. Lake, if you would mind trucking up here once Council may remember, we have the two, the two TIP districts. We also have the third TIP district out at the ballpark at that exit.
Good morning, mayor and council.
Good morning.
I have with me today the chairman of our community redevelopment agency, and that's Dr. Vicky Lake, and she's going to give you some comments concerning some activities that she's been involved with. Also have our master developer for District One and our master developer for District Two that are here that will give you updates for the two redevelopment areas.
Council, I want to thank you so much for allowing us to give you this update today. What began with the Safe Neighborhoods Task Force in 2007 has turned into work to redevelop our community, to not only make it safer, but also a healthier community. I want to first thank all the CRA members and let you know who they are. Ray Tanner, Monty Jones, Councilman Dodd, Tracy Carney, Willie Moore, Noel Huntsman, and myself. And I want to thank them for their hard work. They come to committee meetings, they come to board meetings, and they give up their time freely to make Jackson a better place. Also want to give a great thanks to Stan Pylett and his staff as they guide us through this effort and make sure that we do everything according to federal, state, and local regulations. And I also want to thank our two master developers, Healthy Community LLC and David Hunt, for all the work they've done. I want to turn it over to them, but first I just want to comment on the collaborative work that has resulted in this redevelopment effort that we started back in 2009 with the city of Jackson, West Tennessee Healthcare, the Jackson Chamber, the school system, Lane College, UT Extension Service, where we've been able to work on grants and awards to get recognition, number one, for the great work we've done here, but also to get grants to support and supplement what we've been able to do with the redevelopment efforts. We've received grant funds to develop the dog park, to develop the downtown fitness trail, to pay for concerts at the AMP, to fund the farmers market and develop the EBT program. And we've been also recognized as a healthy city. We've received recognition from the Environmental Protection Agency, Smart Growth Award, and we've also received recognition from the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation. And that's all because of this redevelopment work to make Jackson safer and healthier. As we work forward, as was brought up earlier about the mobile farmers markets and looking at food to help redevelop our community, we are presenting to the school board tonight about Jackson, the old Jackson Central Mary High School campus, to look at it, to help refurbish and possibly do a farmers market and make that a useful, purposeful building in the interim, and hopefully get some kind of approval from the school board to at least move forward with that concept. So as we continue to redevelop in all, in the areas of our community, we're looking at all other avenues of funding to support that. And I just wanted to make sure you knew we were trying to leverage what we're doing with outside funding. So I'll turn it back over to Sam.
Thank you, Dr. Lake. Now I'll introduce you to Hal Crocker, who is our master developer, District One, and he's going to give you an update for District One.
In 2009, we, we first met with city council and talked about redeveloping and revitalizing the center-city area. And Healthy Community LLC, a partnership with, with myself and Mr. Henry Turley of Memphis, was formed in order to redevelop this area, which had been opened up and assembled by the city of Jackson right after the tornado and was ripe for a redevelopment effort. As we looked at the opportunity there after the tornado and the vacant land and the challenges of the neighborhood around there, we, we formed a plan with the, the help of the CRA of how we might best bring economic development and repopulate the downtown area, and the older neighborhoods south of Lambeth. We looked and identified the obvious partners that we might have, the city of Jackson, the Madison County, the downtown organizations, Jackson Energy Authority, Lambeth, which was an independent university at that time, and Lane College as anchor institutions. But in particular, we, we looked at West Tennessee Healthcare, who was looking for an opportunity to build a new wellness center. And we were selling the idea that we should all consider protecting the neighborhood in which we live. And for the city of Jackson, the neighborhood that we were protecting was essentially the heart of our city, that had, over a period of time, had become abandoned and blighted with, with new growth happening around the perimeter of the city, but a, a lack of care and, and maintaining the older part of our city. So we started, we, we ended up successfully negotiating a deal for the wellness center to be a part of the new Jackson Walk community, a planned, walkable, urban environment that would include a wellness and fitness center, a walk-in clinic, physical therapy center, also 20,000 square feet of retail, and 150 new apartment units, along with the development of restoring the fabric of the neighborhood in single-family housing. The, the development, we, we broke ground in 2011 and completed construction in January of 2013. So it's now been a little over three years since the lift opened, a little, almost three years since the apartments were complete, about the same timeframe for the retail. So we, we have, at these days, we have a vibrant retail community with a grocery store, restaurant, stores that serve the needs of the people that live in the community. We have 230 new residents that occupy the apartments. We have 20 new homes either completed or under construction at this time, all homes that we, we have. All homes that we, we have have been sold and are occupied by, by new people to the area. We see, and we see a, a very strong future for this part of our city going forward. We have, we, we still have twenty undeveloped lots that we're in the process of, of selling and helping to be built, the new homes to be built there now. And I guess one, one of the things that we identified was why do people want to live in this area? And that's part of our job, is to make an environment that people would come back to the center of our city to, to, to be a part of. And so in conjunction with the efforts from, from the CRA and the, and the City of Jackson and other grant opportunities, we, we worked with them on enhancement of the farmer's market. We worked with them on developing the dog park. We worked with them and, and spent time with their, with the grant committees, working on the downtown fitness trail. We worked with the City of Jackson in, in helping make the AMP a venue that people would return to. And we, we looked for the idea of connectivity and building a, rebuilding a community where so many things that people would enjoy living by would be near enough that they could walk to, they could ride their bike to, they could feel a part and sense of community in a place that they would live for a long time and raise their families. So we're, we, we turned in a five-year and a seven-year plan to the CRA when we started. We looked for what we thought we'd accomplish. I think that we were supposed to, in five years, complete forty homes. We're in our third year since construction began, and we're, we're passing the twenty mark, and our growth is accelerating. We're looking for other ways for people to be drawn back into the older neighborhoods, not just building new homes, but encouraging people to buy in the neighborhood. We have, the CRA has a homeowner's incentive plan that helps make it a good idea to come back to the older part of our city, both from, both from the standpoint of buying a new home or renovating an existing home. But part of that is just making sure that the residents in the neighborhood, in the Southern Atlanta part, on, on Morgan Street, Haddon Street, would look at this area as a place where their investment would be well-placed, that if they invest and they remodel in their home, that they'll be able to get their money back out of their home at some point in time, that we're, we're going to create an older neighborhood where it's transitioning, but transitioning in a positive way, not in a negative. We continue our effort moving down Morgan Street and now on Dedrick Street. The idea is to eventually connect with the University of Memphis neighborhood. We have some plans for, as I said, Morgan, Dedrick, but also to reach out into Haddon and, and Morgan and cross Lambeth and revitalize that. These are some of the homes that we've built, the young families that have moved into those, those homes and now own them. The rebuilding of the infrastructure is an important component of, of stabilizing the older neighborhoods that we have. You see some of the older homes that we, that have either been torn down, a few of them have been renovated, and you might not recognize them. Some first-time homebuyers have taken advantage of the, of the incentives, but we've also had some empty nesters, older families, people in their sixties and, and even, even seventies that have chosen to live in the new Jackson Walk community because of the convenience and the difference in the lifestyle and the sense of the community. That's a renovated home there. By and large, almost everything that we've built in single-family has been, has, has been homeownership. There are a few properties that remain in rental, but as long as the property owners take good care of those properties, they, they're welcome to be part of our neighborhood as well. This is our, our ditch that we renovated or restored or reclaimed.
That stormwater conveyor system.
So, moving, moving forward, as you know, the CRA acquired the property that was the former Zion Church on Dedrick, and the city has reclaimed and demolished the old West Jackson Elementary School. We're working through a feasibility plan with the CRA on creating a new development at that, which essentially, for placeholder name, we're calling Jackson Walk Two, with the idea of united that. This would be, bring to fruition our seven-year plan. I think it will complete the, the link, reaching out to the University of Memphis campus, and we believe that going forward, it will show the sustainability of this plan going forward without the support of public or, public funds or grants, that we think that this will have, give it the energy that it needs to move forward into the, the next decade. As, as Vicky had mentioned, we received statewide, regional, and national recognition for our efforts in this area, both in, in the restoring the fabric of the neighborhood and, and new and affordable housing in the neighborhood. We've received recognition for the planning of the neighborhood. We received architectural awards and recognition, and as, as Vicky said, we received the National Smart Growth Award for, for environmental, environmental sustainability. This is a preliminary conceptual plan of what we would hope to do with the new property on, of the Zion Church that we, we acquired with fifty new home lots and a hundred single-family, I mean, a hundred apartment family apartments.
Okay, thank you, Hal. Thank you. Any questions from council, any comments from council on District One?
Mr. Chairman, I think District One is doing a fine job, but I have a couple of questions as it relates to West Jackson School. You have acquired that?
Yes, sir.
No, we acquired the Zion Church property. The, the West Jackson School is a, a city property, but we had hoped that the CRA would have an opportunity to develop that as well.
Okay. And I would ask you to take a look at the property itself. For those who do not know, may or may not know, the, the line is drawn at the railroad tracks, is that correct? CRA One and CRA Two, at the railroad tracks on Lane and that stands down. That's your line, right?
Yes.
We ask you to take a look at the oldest street area beside Salvation Army. There's a block or two there, which is a stone throw from downtown, is dilapidated, and that would help expand the downtown area past the Jackson Walk. You all familiar with what I'm talking about?
Aye.
Okay. And, and we ask you also on the West Jackson deal, which I'll come up a little later, we'll discuss that a little later. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other, any other comments or questions from council on District One? Well, Mr. Crocker's here. Yeah, y'all, y'all just remain seated and stand, while I turn it back over to you or Vicky for...
I'd like to introduce you, David Hunt. He is our master developer for District Two, and he's going to give you an update of what's going on.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Morning, David.
Council, everyone doing well today? Thank you for the opportunity to give, allow me to be here today. Very, very excited to talk about some of the things we're doing in District Two. I became the master developer December twenty thirteen here. Obviously, District Two presents other issues, opportunities, some negative opportunities, and we've tried to take those negative opportunities and mitigate them by partnering with the CRA, by providing financial incentives and things like that to bring retail to the area. One of the goals of District Two in the very beginning was to bring economic development and try to create jobs in the market. Both districts have different goals, and that, that was District Two's primary goal. So what I've tried to do was to take some of the negative attitudes people have about investing in District Two and to turn those into positive. And the best way I could do it, quite frankly, just by the traffic and the fact you have so many high-income jobs and manufacturing jobs in that area, and we don't have the rooftops. So as a developer, what I tried to do is mitigate those negative points of view by some of the industry, retail industry, to show them that you have people driving, buying cars, just don't have anywhere to spend their money. And so, and so the real goal for me, from the very beginning, was to try to establish that fact, and then from that fact derive the opportunity for the members, for the citizens in that area. And so to that end, I can just tell you, it's been a challenge. Being a private investor, being a private business owner, it's a little bit different working inside the government, and I just want to tell you that the, that the, that the mayor, the city council, as well as the CRA, has been quite helpful in helping me kind of stay within bounds, standards. Probably had to beat me over the head two or three times, "David, you can't do that with government funds, you can't do this, you can't do that." And so it's been a challenge for me, quite frankly, but I believe that I've kind of got my arms around it. I believe that we have some great, great things coming forward that I want to talk about a little bit today. So my iPad just went off on me. First, I want to say to you that we, about a year ago, the CIA approved and funded a program with Southwest HRA, which is our building partners out of Henderson, Tennessee, and they're in the process now over on Whitehall, building a cluster of low-income, middle, middle-class homes there. They're building six to eight homes in that area. It's a cluster of homes right there off Whitehall that's going to bring a lot of value, and the first probably new, new homes built in this area in quite a while. And these are going to be high-quality homes, highly efficient homes, and I think two of them have already been sold, and I think she has two or three more persons that are looking to, looking to sign up for them and buy. Southwest also has a homeowner program that they're training and trying to educate the, the people who are buying the homes about, you know, paying your mortgage on time, about taking care of your land, and about taking care of things long-term, so your buy, your home stays high and goes up. So that's very positive all the way around. So we're very excited about that. Also, we invested about six-hundred thousand dollars in this program with them, and about seventy percent of that money will be reinvested once the homes are sold and occupied. That money will be taken out and reinstated and built more homes around, around the District Two area, so it's very positive there. We also have worked out some very exciting retail opportunities. I've been in Jackson roughly twenty-four, twenty-five years, and to my knowledge, I don't think there's been any major retail done in this district since I've been here. And I think, I know that's one of the mayor's challenges to me when we first took over, and obviously we've, we went out and sought opportunity. As I mentioned, one of the things that brings so much value to East Jackson is, in this district, is all the traffic and all the jobs that's in the area, and so many people drive by. So I was able to contact the Huddle House, which currently does not have a store here in Madison County, who do really well outside of Madison County, and I couldn't figure out why. They primarily sell breakfast early in the morning, late at night, and you just think all the folks coming to work, that would be a natural, natural partnership. And so we were able to get Huddle House to locate on Whitehall, and Effie Wright, they have a one-point-two-acre tract that they're building on there. The building's under construction. The franchisee, Mr. Don Lord and his wife, are already at training today. They'll be finished with training October fifth, and the building will be opened up sometime around mid-October of this year. Probably the first sit-down restaurant in that area other, other than Subway in quite a while. We also, as in the process, my wife and I are building a retail center called the Breeze Center that's eighteen thousand square foot that will be built and operating by November of this year. We also signed a contract with Bennington's Restaurant, which was a full-scale, very similar to Chili's. Some of y'all may have grew up eating at Bennington's back in the day, but they kind of went out. A gentleman named Paul Mangielli, who's the CEO, he and I have become good friends over the years, and he's committed to putting the Bennington's Restaurant inside the Breeze Center. Mr. Lord will also be the franchise of that restaurant, and that'll be open before Thanksgiving of this year. It'll employ probably about seventy-five to eighty people pending up on sales. It would be, you know, set down, very similar to a Chili's or high-scale, mid-scale restaurant-type concept. He's very excited about the investment, he's very excited about the opportunity to be in this market, and we're very excited, obviously, about having him. Also inside that retail center, which would be, as I mentioned, eighteen thousand square feet, Dr. Wright will be relocating his practice. He's also signed a contract with two other dentists that's going to be relocating to the Jackson, Madison County area, and he's going to occupy about thirty-five hundred square feet in this new retail center, which is going to give, which is going to give us a great anchor, obviously, having a local tenant like him in that space. We just recently signed a contract with the franchisee, who also going to bring a Comet Dry Cleaners to the market, which we're very excited about, which is something that this area really needs. With all the churches there and all the businesses there, you can drop off your clothes and pick up your clothes, so we're very excited about getting them in this retail center as well. So basically, we have about sixty-five to seventy percent of this retail center already, already leased and before it's even completed. So we anticipate opening that up a lot of part of this year, spring of next year. Along with that, we, the CRA also approved funding for the Omega House, which basically CRA purchased Dr. Wright's building and basically conveyed it over to fraternity here in town, who's going to offer student outreach, community participation, teaching and training of students in the afternoon, and they also may get into also some prison reentry programs that are available to them as far as just being positive direction in the community. Just recently, we are fortunate enough to partner with Raymond Hutchinson, no, Relondo, no, I'm sorry, Relondo Hutchinson, out of Birmingham, Alabama. And like I said, I go to no end to try to bring opportunity to this market and try to, and try to talk to anybody and everybody about the reinvesting in this district. He lives in Birmingham, Alabama. He's originally from Jackson, his family's from Jackson, and he started, he and I started a dialogue about eighteen months ago about doing something in East Jackson. And I had talked to him quite a while about the opportunity that I saw with all the investment that you all have made on East Chester, with beautifying East Chester, they're putting all the sidewalks on East Chester, just all the things the city has already done, and I finally convinced him and his wife that that's a great place for them to go. So they're going to build an eight, I'm sorry, six-to-eight thousand square foot retail center on East Chester that's going to house several local entities that were looking for space to rent, some new business, new business opportunity on East Chester, as well as maybe some restaurants as well. So they'll start their construction sometime in spring of next year there. And lastly, we have a young man, Mr. Croomes, here in Jackson, who owns a detail shop and tire shop over on Hayes Avenue. Right around the corner on Whitehall, there was dilapidated building that, that he purchased about a year and a half ago. He and I have been working together with his banker and what have you, and the CRA just approved at our last meeting, converting that building that he had purchased into a Jackson Tire and Loop Center. There's no place on that side of town at all to get oil changed, to get anything done other than driving all the way out south or all the way out north. So now this is going to give us the opportunity in Midtown to have some place to take your vehicle and get oil changed, quick loop, get it cleaned up, get a set of tires and things of that nature as well. That's kind of where we are and what we're working on. We, we, we could have brought you pictures of things being worked on, but I feel like maybe like six months from now, a year from now, we come back for another update, would be to show you pictures about how things was versus how things are. As I said, it's been challenging, but it's been fun. I've learned a lot, I've enjoyed the process, and I really feel like today that we're moving in the right direction, thanks to all your leadership and the CRA, that we've, we've introduced ourselves and made friends with a lot of great young business folks that want to, that want to be part of our community for a long period of time, and I'm just happy to be a very small part of it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
David, thank you. That's exciting news for District Two, and thank you for all your hard work. I've had the opportunity to attend to several ribbon cuttings and groundbreaking over there, so that's, that's always exciting. Council's heard from both districts. Any, any questions, any comments for either the master developers or...
Come back for District Two, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hunt, good morning.
Good morning, sir.
We're looking forward, oh, so excited, the citizens of East Jackson, to all that you talked about with respect to development. Oh my, it will be a great day, and we're looking forward to each and everything that you just said. We're looking forward to the stabilization and the revitalization. If all those things come to fruition, it will be a great day. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, if I could have said thank to Ms. Vicky Lake and both master developer, your work and hard work. I know it's been a long time coming, because downtown's been doing great. We would like to encourage the people to support downtown development and also East Jackson. With East Jackson, we have had some struggling times in that area, but people have to understand that if you want business, you have to support it. So, you know, right now, the business is coming, but we have asked the people, please come out and support the business so we can continue to grow in that area, because business can't come and continues to stay in business without people supporting it. So it's very important that our people in that area come out and support it. Thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you. Anyone else of council, comments or... Let me just say this, on behalf of, I think, one of the most profound decisions this council has made over the past few years has been the establishment of the CRA and establishing those two TIF districts. We had to go to the, we did have to go to General Assembly for that, didn't we not?
We had to, yes, sir.
And I think those are almost a thing of the past now, so council was ahead of the curve in approving that, that resolution to establish this board, and Vicky, you nailed it. it. The board members, the CRA, hardworking, visionaries, totally focused on redevelopment of this city. You know, District One, and, and since we have a special guest here, I can tell you that Bobby Arnold played a major part, just determined to have our wellness center downtown, and that was, that took us a long way, and we appreciate him and his passion for establishing the Lift Center and what you and, and Henry have done. And David, thank you for what you're doing at East Jackson. I know it has been, I know you've had some trials along the way, and we knew, we knew that upfront, that it would be difficult, but, and, and establishing those TIF districts, we obviously have to give up funds for the general fund. We have to do without something. But to my knowledge, nothing is free. You give up something to get something. So this is exactly what we're doing, so I commend, commend all of you on what you're doing, and please express to the, to the rest of the CRA how much we appreciate them and their, their hard work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item, item five, under new business update from the city attorney, as to research of ownership of City of Jackson school properties, and alcohol loan councilman Buchanan.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, and to the council, and our honorable chairman. I have been approached by several organizations, several businesses, institute of higher learning about the city schools, who owns them, what are the rights, what are the privileges. There was a 1990 agreement, and I'm going to let Mr. Cobb speak on it, that says that when they cease being schools, that they revert back to the city and county. Now whether or not, who has the right to do what and how, we need to know, because they've been asking me, and I didn't know what to say.
Let me just give a general overview, and then as far as specific questions, I'd be glad to answer those in more detail as we go. For years, the city and the county maintained separate school systems. Then because of some litigation concerning desegregation, those districts were frozen, but there were several schools that were owned by the city, and the title to these schools has not changed, no new deed. But during the process of consolidation, there was a consolidation plan, and that wrote up the new arrangement, and how those schools would be run, and then what happens to them when they're no longer needed. There is a question for which I don't have an absolute answer, and that is, if a school is no longer useful and no longer valuable, who pays the bills to decommission it? But the schools that used to be owned by the city school system are still titled in the name of the city schools. A comparison was when Jackson Utility Division was created, it was separate from the city, but a, a child of the city, if you will, and the property would be held City of Jackson in trust for the use of the Jackson Utility Division. Then when JEA came and it became its own independent, state-chartered organization, it now holds, titled the property in its own name generally. So the, if you went and looked at the registrar's office, the last deed, it's usually in the name of the city. But the consolidation plan said that the land will, or the buildings will be used by the school system, they will be custodian of those buildings, and as custodians, they have the right and the responsibility to run them, to heat them, to fix them, repair them when they burn, they rebuild them when the roof needs repairing. Then the plan says, when the schools are no longer needed, the school system has the right to put them up for sale, sell them, and keep the money that goes into the general fund. The West Jackson School was no longer needed, but there was no buyer. New school systems, I mean, new school buildings do not have much of a market, unless there's oil underneath them or something. So when it came time to decommission that school, the cost of decommission, at the moment exceeded the value, the market value of the land. And so the city negotiated with the county and the school system for, the city would take the school back over and under, take the cost of decommission it with the right to own it, because the school system no longer needed it, and so it, if you will, surrendered custody. And that, that's as, as good overview as I can say. So if someone wanted to buy a school and turn it into a mall, or some, you know, valuable retail, the, the school system would be the one that would make the decision to sell on what terms, what conditions. If the school system says, we don't need this building, we can't use this building, there is no buyer for this building, then there's a question about who, who has the obligation to assume those costs. And that's something that would be, need to be negotiated between the parties, or as all other disputes, if you can't agree, we'll go ask somebody whose name begins with Judge to tell us what it means. Does that answer your question, Mr. Buchanan?
No.
I didn't think it would.
Let me ask the-
But I don't think you asked me the real question.
Let me ask the hypothetical question. If an institution, or schools, or other schools, going to be private schools, charter schools, wanted to build it, who would they have to see?
The school board would make that decision.
I mean, not selling it.
School board would make that decision.
If, if they're not selling it.
School board would make that, they're the custodian.
They make the, they make the decision of giving it away?
Yes.
No.
Well, we disagree.
We, we own the rights to it, the city does. School board does not make the decision of giving it away. That's my-
I don't think that act was contemplated in the legislation that was-
Custodian rights. That's all.
It's, it, it is unclear what happened. It is my opinion that the school system, as the custodian of the property, continues to be custodian until they do one of two things. Sell it, and they keep the money, or return it, and then we can do with it what we want to. Now, if somebody wanted to come in and run a school, and the school system wanted to surrender custody back to the city, then, then that would, then make it a city decision.
Very good. That's all the questions I have.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I do have a question. I guess if, if pretty much the city has no positive relationship for the school buildings, if the, if it's sellable, then the, then the school department gets the money, if they need to be torn down, then the city's going to be stuck with the-
Sounds like heads I win, tails you lose.
Okay. Given that scenario, would it be possible for the city to go ahead and deed all those properties over to the school department or the county, be done with it?
Maybe.
Is that something that we should consider strongly? I mean, there's no benefit to us to, to continue to have ownership, is there?
All I see is liabilities.
That's all I'm seeing. I wonder if we would be better off just deed them over to the, to the school board or the county, whoever go to, and be done with it.
You've now exceeded my pay grade, because you ask a policy question, not a legal question. And are we partners with the school system in education? We know we provide a great deal of tax and, and other support. If we want to simply look at dollars and cents from the accounting standpoint, you're probably right. But if there, there are other issues and other policy issues at play. That's all I'm saying, it's, it's not really a legal question.
Okay, I, I guess the, from, from a legal standpoint, for us to deed the property over to the county, the county would want to have, have to be willing to accept it.
Well, right, if, if I have a toxic waste dump, and I sign a deed and put it in your name, you might say, wait a minute. And so-
We'd have to get the county to agree to that.
It is my opinion that moves and transitions like that should be, would be best done by agreement between all parties involved, as opposed to just dropping a deed on them and wishing them, you know, good luck.
But that has to agree to-
Would they have to? I, I think so, but I'm not sure about that. I mean, we're, we're entering, we're entering, those questions are things that were not considered at the time the legislation of consolidation was adopted and passed.
Well, my, you know, my concern naturally is that, you know, as the school has become older, more lappidated, that the city could discover the building tearing down at some point-
Legitimate concern.
And we're paying so much to school departments already that-
Of course, the we that are paying the city taxes and the we that are paying for school taxes are pretty much the same we, so I, I've always been real reluctant to, to have battles where taxpayers are funding both sides of litigation. That's the worst of all outcomes.
The city taxpayers are funding twice, because we're also county.
Exactly, exactly.
Lewis?
Any other questions?
Just one question for clarity. All right, Melissa's school, that, we had operated two county and city systems. Of course, Melissa's was a county school. It's in the city limits, but it's still a responsibility of the county, correct?
It's, I, I didn't look at that one, but it's my understanding that the deal with the county is the same as the city, that it's still in the county's name, but I'm not sure about that. I mean, I'd be, I'd be glad to look, look and check and see.
If you could check that, because then the same thing would apply that you've been explaining about JCM.
The reason that answer that question is not clear is because the question was not asked.
Okay, okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
Just, I guess for clarification, under the old consolidation agreement-
You talked about the legislation in 90 and 91?
Right, under, under that legislation, the city and county own the schools together. Is that correct?
Well, what they really did is, they just sort of pushed all their chips into the middle and said, school system, y'all run them.
Okay.
It's a custody arrangement.
Right, so, so with that backdrop, would, would we not revert back to that in the sense that the city would have at least a say in how those schools or those buildings would be running in-
You would think.
On the other end.
You, you would think, but those questions were not addressed in that enabling legislation.
Right, because we didn't contemplate being here.
What it did, right, what it, what we did contemplate is, is if the properties had value, then that value would also flow to the school system. It is when the properties have negative value that, is, is the unanswered question.
Right, and, and as we stand today, those decisions are, are made by the school board, that's your opinion?
Yes.
Okay. And, and my last question is, to, to clear up some of the confusion or some of the unanswered questions, would we need an attorney's general's opinion, since there was original enacting legislation on the front end of that?
That, that would be one way to do it. Of course, those opinions are advisory opinions, not binding on either party, but usually pretty insightful.
Right, and, and, and would give us direction on this issue, right?
Right. In, in going through this, I also did some research on other school consolidation issues. You know, Memphis Shelby County went through one, and there's several papers on it, and the type of questions that Mr. Buchanan answered and asked Mr. Wallace, those things are, there's no clear, we call bright line, yes or no. It is clear that the school system has custody of our buildings, and has all the rights and responsibilities of ownership. It's clear that if they want, don't want to use it for schools, they want to sell them, they can do that.
Because we've done one transaction already, correct?
That legislation was-
No, West Jackson.
Oh, yeah, that, that one was done.
We've done one transaction.
We've done one transaction. But I know, I assume that's all.
I think, I think the council's looking at the composition of any agreement as it refers to government. Some of them are pretty good, some of them are terrible, some of them are great. Whether this is a good decision, I'll, I'll leave to the public opinion. Whether we should seek to change that or not, there's some school of thought, as when we consolidated the public schools, that the cost to the city would be based on per capita, per student. Obviously, the enrollment has decreased, but we're paying more taxes to, to support the public education, and there's some school, in that agreement, some school of thought saying, okay, let's pay X number of dollars of our sales tax money per capita, per student. That did not occur, so right now, we're paying, what, 40, almost? 37 million for fewer students in our, in our system, which I'll leave that again to public opinion. When Westwood Gardens was demolished and sold, the property, just 80 something, how much was it then? 80 something?
Eighty-five thousand.
Eighty-five thousand dollars for the property. Now, it's in new hands at 1.1 million. Our deed to the, to the first owners did not contain a reversionary clause, so again, there are good agreements, bad agreements, and terrible agreements. So I've asked, I've asked the council to kind of watch my back on any agreement we enter into with anybody, okay? With that sermon, any other, any other comments? Okay, thank you.
I'm halfway clear.
All right. You caught up with my-
That's, that's better than most issues. Okay, you're good. Okay, item six, is consideration professional services contract with House of Levine to rewrite the current zoning ordinance. You have that contract? If you have any questions, Stan and planning staff is kind of coordinating our One Jackson Master Plan, obviously, that was a component of it.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
That was second discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, consideration of professional services contract with the same firm, associates to prepare a Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and Tony, if I, if I call correctly, we're going to be restricted on state funding if we don't get this done.
The state now has really put a strong stipulation on any city, particular recreation park, park that applies for any state, federal money, must have updated the master plan, which would mean within a 10-year span. Ours is old.
Gotcha, okay.
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion.
Second.
Second discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, item eight is a consideration professional service agreement with SCI Architects for an arena convention center feasibility study as part of the One Jackson Master Plan.
Move for approval.
Question on the motion.
The cause for the study? $100,000. How much? I'm sorry, how much? Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council as to this contract?
SCI Architects was chosen because they've got experience in this.
That's right, they're, they're well experienced in the area of arenas and convention centers at all sizes and venues, so we felt like they were expert in this area.
Will they be relying on the House of Laverne studies, previous studies, the Master Plan?
Well, they will, they will be looking specifically at an arena convention center feasibility in terms of how, if the Jackson market could support such a, such a facility, where are some possible locations that it could be feasibly located, those sort of things. But in the end, they'll give us an idea of whether we could support that type of facility, which has been a, a question that has loomed out there for, for years. Stan, what do we budget for this study?
When can we expect a report?
I believe they said the study will take them about three to four months.
Been an issue that's been discussed for 15 years, so maybe this will either send us in one direction or the other after this completion. Any other questions from council?
And when you talk about that they'll come up with some possible locations, this may be something that would be built from the ground up, or they'll be looking at other buildings that could be converted, even possibly looking at new space to buy, they'll have all of that.
That's some of the questions they'll be looking at.
Any other, any other questions or comments? Okay, is there a motion for approval of the contract?
Move the approval.
Motion, a second discussion, council? Council, please vote.
And the motion passes, eight members in favor, one against.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Okay, thank you, Stan. Item nine is budget amendment. Bill?
Good morning, we have two budget amendments this month.
We have two budget amendments this month. The first one is for the street department in the amount of $18,507.13 for the purchase of a bush hog and a trailer. This will require a draw on fund balance.
So moved.
Have a motion.
Second.
Second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
The second amendment that you have before you today is for the purchase of two additional haul trucks and require a draw on fund balance in the solid waste fund in the amount of $300,000.
So moved.
A motion, a second discussion. Council, please vote.
Thank you.
And the motion passes with eight members in favor, one against.
Thanks, Ms. Bill. Item 10 is consideration of invoices over $10,000.
So moved.
Second. Motion, second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
There being no further business, meeting is adjourned.
Hey, Tony?